So, I'd like to call this meeting to order. Could stand please for the pledge of allegiance. Councilman Schlack, if you'd leave us in the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Corumba.
President.
Councilwoman Dewitt.
Here.
Councilwoman Schlack though.
Here.
Mayor Simmons.
Here.
Councilwoman O'Flynn.
Here.
Councilwoman Gibson.
Here.
Councilwoman Forbes.
Okay, thank you very much. And we have a few issues here ahead of us. If Audrey, you'd like to get us started, please?
Yes, I'm going to read the title block of the first ordinance. I have reviewed the affidavit of publication and it is legally sufficient. This is a zoning ordinance of the city of Benita Springs, Florida, considering a request by Gregory and Margot Farago for five-foot reduction for a street setback and a 13-foot reduction to the water body setback for a single-family home pursuant to 4-1893 and 4-1894 subsection B of the Land Development Code located at 27844 Forrester Drive, Benita Springs, Florida, providing for an effective date. This is the second reading of the ordinance. Mike Fegan will provide you with the history of the case. The applicant, are the applicants here? Do you want to come on up here and sit here? And I do need to swear in Mr. Fegan as well as the Faragos and anybody else that is interested in this particular case. So at this time, if I could have you raise your right hand, do you swear from the testimony you provide today is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you. Now, I will swear in more people if we need to during the case, but Mr. Fegan, please proceed.
Thank you. Good morning, counsel. A pleasure to be with you this morning. Quick presentation for you to provide a synopsis and the background of the case. Once again, as Audrey stated, we're at 27844 Forrester Drive and the request is to grant a five-foot reduction in the street setback and a 13-foot reduction in the water body setback pursuant to, excuse me, pursuant to the redevelopment of a single-family home on that lot. To kind of give you an idea of where we're coming from, the current street setback along Forrester Drive is a 25-foot setback from the road right of way. And the current water body setback, we take from the mean-high water line, not necessarily the property line, but the mean-high water line. It's also a 25-foot setback. Keep that in mind, that's going to come back in a later slide. More background for you, it is a platted lot of record from a 1942 plat. The zoning is RS1, which is a standard residential, single-family zoning designation for the lot. Typically RS1 zone property has a requirement to be at least 75 feet wide and at least 100 feet deep and have at least 7,500 square feet in area. This parcel is undersized when you look at it from those rules and regulations, which is one of the reasons why we're here today. The actual width of the parcel is only 50 feet and the depth varies between 98 feet on its shortest side and 117 on its longest side with about 104 feet to the midway point of the actual rear property line, not mean-high water line, but the actual rear property line. The depth of the mean-high water line is only 78 feet. And again, that is the line where we take our water body setbacks from. So in all aspects, this lot is a non-conforming lot. It is a lot of record, it is platted, which is one of the reasons why it's still a buildable lot under our code, but it is undersized, not as a result of any of the actions of the applicant. Just wanted to provide a quick GIS photo so we have an idea of what we're talking about there in terms of the location of the lot, where we are and what's there now, and again, what they're looking to go ahead and replace. And again, you see the lines going into the water, you see what approximately ends up being the water's edge. These GIS photos, this is more just for a reference, it's not a survey, it's not completely accurate, but it is just a nice reference that I wanted to provide for counsel. To keep in mind, again, being in the RS1 zoning district, all of these surrounding lots have the same zoning designation, so the lot itself is compatible both in size and zoning designation with surrounding properties. And over the years, several variances of a very similar nature have been approved by counsel in the past. In 2008, actually, the neighbors of Mr. and Mrs. Farago, lots 16, 17, and 18 to the north, all received variances for a 10-foot water body setback reduction and a five-foot street setback reduction. And just last year, we had the most recent variance, I believe it was on Hickory, with a five-foot street setback and a 10-foot water body setback as well. So what they're asking for tends to fall in line with previous actions and approvals that the counsel has granted. With all of that in mind, keeping in mind that it is a non-conforming lot, that the hardship is not due to the results of the applicant and that the request is compatible with surrounding properties and with other variances that have already been processed and approved, staff felt compelled to recommend approval for this variance. Also, due to the recent changes in public participation, one of the things that we as staff do is we send out public notices to let everybody know within 375 feet of the parcel that a zoning action is taking place. One of the changes that we made is that we now allow applicants to respond via mail whether or not they support or oppose an upcoming zoning action. We received unanimous support for this zoning action specifically. Zoning Board also granted unanimous approval back on their hearing. And if the approval is granted today, of course, we would attach conditions to it such as the variance being limited to just the lot in question, the fact that we're just talking about the water body setback and the street setback, all other zoning and all other development regulations would remain in full effect. Also, just wanted to give you some examples of some types of elevations that they're looking to do. This style is actually becoming quite common with the redevelopment up and down Forrester. Councilman Schlack, you know that being in your district, you can vouch for that. So just wanted to give you an idea of what they're looking to do. A lot of the homes that are there are a lot older, you're talking 1950s, 60s, and early 70s. So, you know, this seems to be the next movement towards redevelopment up and down that street. But again, compatible with what has already been built with the previous lots that received variances. And with that, if you have any questions or comments.
Counsel?
No.
Nope.
Since this is my district, I'd like to make motion to approve.
Second.
Been a motion to approve in a second. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Corumba.
Aye.
Mayor Simmons.
Aye.
Councilman Dewitt.
Aye.
Councilman Schlack though.
Aye.
Councilman O'Flynn.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gibson.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, absolutely. You guys want to say anything?
Yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Or of members of the public.
Okay, members of the public? Comment at this time?
Okay, nobody on this one?
Okay, great.
Would have been easier. Why did I have to read all this?
Some cases are easier than others.
This one was a no-brainer.
This is a zoning ordinance of the city of Benita, I'm beginning the next case, a zoning ordinance of the city of Benita Springs, Florida, considering a request by Cyrus Benita LLC to rezone from the CC, Community Commercial Zoning District, to Commercial Plan Development, CPD, providing for a temporary commercial parking lot, a 60-room hotel motel with accessory uses in addition to other permitted CC uses on .065 more, I'm sorry, on 0.65 more or less acres, that would be a real tiny lot, located at 9790 Benita Beach Road, Benita Springs, Florida, providing for an effective date. This is the second reading of the ordinance. Before we start, I do need to swear in witnesses, please raise your right hand. Anybody else that may testify, please raise your right hand. And do you swear or affirm testimony provided today is true, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you. Now, if somebody, I see there's some people who didn't swear in, I may ask you if you decide to come up there, it's optional. Mr. Slack, if you want to sit up there to do the applicant, and Ms. Crespo, if you would like to turn up your face.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning. For the record, Alexis Crespo with Waldrop Engineering. I am here this morning representing the applicant and the owner of the subject property, Mr. Gohari. He's available if you have any questions. We also have Norm Tribielcock here with Tribielcock Consulting Solutions, who's the traffic engineer, who can answer any questions regarding transportation. However, we are in full agreement with staff on their conditions regarding Benita Beach Road, so should not be an issue on that. I wanted just to start with modifications we've made since the zoning board to address some of the concerns we heard regarding the petition. We are proposing to reduce the number of hotel units from the 60 being proposed to 52 units. We feel that's much more likely to be constructed because staff has limited the building height to three feet, I'm sorry, three stories, three feet, that would be very short. Due to that restriction of three stories, the 52 units is much more reasonable considering the parking will need to accommodate any other space within the building. We are also proposing to remove option B for the temporary parking lot. We understand this is somewhat contrary to the Benita Beach Road vision, even though it was intended to be temporary and very limited in terms of its timeframe, we did hear some concern about that. It was to accommodate the neighbor, Momentum Brewery. He wanted to be a good neighbor and help him out, but to the extent counsel has concerns regarding temporary parking lots on Benita Beach Road, we're certainly ready to remove that from this request this morning because Mr. Gohari's vision is to just develop this hotel use. He's done some boutique hotels in the Washington DC area. He's currently completing a small, high-end residential development in Naples, and this is really one of his legacy projects that he's liked to see developed on Benita Beach Road. And today, we're really focusing on the use of the hotel and the property. We are conditioned to come back to you and come back to your staff and the zoning board with the elevation and design of the building before we could move forward with construction plans. So staff has conditioned us very strictly that we've got to come back for kind of step two, if you will, to show you the actual design when we have it. What today would do would be indicating to Mr. Gohari that counsel is generally supportive of a hotel use on the property, subject to limitations, and that he could then feel comfortable with his investors to invest in the architectural design of the building, which is upwards of six figures when you start laying everything out. So we would ask that you focus on the use aspect of the request because we will be back. The subject property is located on the north side of Benita Beach Road. We are west of Old 41 and to the east of US 41. The subject property is currently vacant. It used to house an old, somewhat dilapidated hotel up until about 2000. It was removed when Mr. Gohari purchased the property. Our surrounding neighbors include the 69-room Comfort Inn, which is a three-story existing hotel, which is consistently booked out in season. When we bring in folks in town to interview at Waldrop, it's very difficult to get rooms in season anywhere in Benita, which just shows the demand for the use. To our west, we have the Momentum Brewery, as well as commercial medical office uses oriented along the corridor. To the north, we have the multifamily Citadel complex. And then to the south of the road, we have also multifamily in Marbella Spanish Wells. And then as you move east along the corridor, you have additional commercial uses developed such as Dolly's and Rick Johnson to the east of us. So this photo is what used to be on the property. The property is cleared and vacant, it's commercial zoned, community commercials, a very permissive zoning district that allows a very wide range of uses from fast food to package stores, auto service stations, et cetera. So he doesn't want to develop those uses, he's looking to do the hotel use through the CPD application. And it's also very consistent with your general commercial, future land use category. As you can see, the subject property and all surrounding lands are within that red commercial zoning district and red commercial future land use category, which further indicates the appropriateness for the use. So what we're looking to do is, again, have the hotel use added to the property as a permitted use. We're agreeing to several conditions which we hope provides counsel some comfort moving forward. One big one is no direct access to this property from Benita Beach Road. We will tie in through our neighbors, through Momentum and through Comfort Inn. We will not try to get a new access point onto the roadway, which is very in line with what you're looking to do with the Benita Beach Road corridor study. We're limiting our unit count. We are requesting one deviation for a reduced buffer width with more plantings within that buffer width to screen views of the building, but due to the infill constraints of the property, we are seeking that relief. Staff has determined it's compliant with your comprehensive plan. The infrastructure is in place for the 52-unit hotel, and we are in agreement with all conditions to come back to you once we have more details. The subject property is shown on the proposed master concept plan. The hotel building would be centrally located. Access, as I noted, would be from the Momentum existing curb cut, and then there's also the ability to have a cross-access easement with the Comfort Inn. So again, keeping this as an uninterrupted buffer frontage along the property. The building would be oriented towards the front, there would not be any parking in front of the building in between the roadway, and circulation would occur around the building with parking internal to the structure. So that requires quite a bit of design on Mr. Gohari's part, but we understand in order to accommodate the parking, we've got to go under the building and within the building to, and that also will screen it from the roadway, which we see is a very positive thing. And the drive aisle will be designed for fire access, all those different infrastructure needs around the exterior of the building with the required buffers in place. The three stories in height is consistent with the other buildings you have along the Benita Beach Road corridor, and we are in agreement with that condition to design the building accordingly. We've demonstrated public infrastructures in place from water sewer standpoint. We have completed a traffic study. We understand the city staff is analyzing traffic studies a little bit differently than Lee County does, and we're agreeing to the condition that this applicant will pay his proportionate fair share towards any future improvements that are needed on Benita Beach Road pending the outcome of your different studies that are occurring right now. The deviation we're seeking is to reduce the width of the buffer along our northern property line from 15 feet to seven and a half feet, but what we'd be doing is supplementing that with an additional tree as well as additional shrubs in that area. What's important to note is there's walls along, existing walls along all of our boundaries, which are doing a really good job of screening the ground-level view of this property. So what the trees will do is build in that upper-story blockage of view sheds from the neighboring property, and we feel that's going to be much more effective than the additional spatial provisions of the code. So you can see the existing wall to the north along Citadel's boundary as well as the wall to the Comfort Inn site to the east. Staff has recommended approval. They're limiting our height, they're asking us to come back for counsel approval when we have our design locked down. Again, this will provide Mr. Gohari the comfort to go ahead and spend the dollars to design this boutique hotel. We're in agreement with the traffic conditions and understand the long-term vision for the roadway. We believe the hotel use is consistent with the surrounding land use pattern as evidenced by our neighboring hotel use. We have the buffers in place to screen views from surrounding properties, and we feel like this is a use that is more in line with the Benita Beach Road corridor than other uses that could be developed on the site. And so we would ask for your recommend, or your approval today and look forward to being able to come back to you with the exact plans for the building in the future. Thank you.
Okay. Counsel? Amy?
Just two, three questions, actually. Do the three stories, is that the garage in two stories or three stories altogether?
It would be three stories altogether, including any ground floor parking. So he may have to go sub-ground level with some additional parking needs in order to stay in that three stories.
Okay, so but from the street, it would look like three stories, whatever.
Correct.
And then I just have some, a question about the landscape buffer.
Yes, ma'am.
You know, when you give a numerical guideline, it's hard to envision whether that would be appropriate or not, in regard to blocking from the surrounding areas. When you go for your next plan, would we have the opportunity to look at a plan for the landscape? And if it was necessary to do more to block, that we would be able to request that you do that?
I think you could absolutely condition approval of the deviation.
Can we condition that we would have staff review of your landscape plan, just to reinforce the idea that we are blocking? I mean, I understand you have all the walls along on either side and they look good, and I think, and I agree with the concept of getting the landscape even closer to where you're trying to block. Whether six trees will do it, I don't know, you know, because I can't envision that.
Yes, that, we would be in agreement with the condition to provide that information as well.
So the staff would make sure that that numerical criterion would be met to accomplish the goal. And just a curiosity thing, this has nothing to do with this thing, it sounds like you have a good program here. In regard to the impact fees, because there was a hotel there before, you would get credit for that, is that still in?
Correct at the, at the new rate?
Is that true?
That is being proposed.
No. Well, there's a draft ordinance, so it would be consistent with the draft ordinance, but was there, there was a hotel?
There is probably 10 units there.
She said there was a hotel, but.
They would get to offset the use.
Irrespective of whether the ordinance are current.
Right.
They always, we have in place a procedure that if there was a previous use, we.
We've had that in place.
Yeah.
Prior to the city's incorporation.
That's just a question. But it would be, it would be, the former use was hotel, is that correct?
Right. So they would do the calculation on the hotel, so whatever use it was, we'll get the offset, but unless it exceeded the amount of impact fees, and then, of course, they don't get a refund.
Okay, all right, just curiosity. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Great. Thanks, Amy. Greg?
Just a couple of questions. First one is, what's the timeline for the hotel? I mean, if we, if this all gets, are we talking five years down the road, two years down the road?
The next step would be for him to get his architect under contract, which would probably, I would estimate about six months for design development, but he's been wanting to get the development order plans going, so I would think the two-year timeframe is where we could potentially be breaking ground.
Okay, because my, I guess my thought is, is that we're asking Comfort Inn and/or Momentum to, you know, open up their parking lots for them, and then part of your, I guess, negotiations was to take away the temporary parking lot. Wouldn't that be a good neighbor on our part to let them have a temporary parking lot until they start building?
We're certainly open to that. That was part of our initial request, to the extent it causes any heartburn, we want to make sure counsel understands the hotel is the most important thing to Mr. Gohari, but he knows Brian well and thinks it's, there's going to be synergy with the hotel and that use in the future, and we'd be happy to, if it's not a problem, we would appreciate the ability to do the temporary parking lot. And it, staff is requiring us to put in the buffer and basically build it to Chapter Three standards, so it's not going to be a dirt parking lot, it would be a paved parking lot with the type D buffer.
Well, that's what I was going to say, I agree with Greg, because if we allow them to put in the temporary parking lot, at least we get the buffering along Beach Road now.
Exactly.
And make it look better in the interim while we're waiting on the hotel, so.
Thank you.
Greg, anything else?
No, that was just my two questions.
Steve?
That sounds like it all can work out, then, right? What Greg is saying?
I think so, yes, that would be excellent.
Good.
Peter? I'm sorry.
Yeah, I just, I'd rather hear from staff and the public before I have any comments.
Okay, sure. Mike?
I'll hold the remainder of my comments.
Okay. Staff, Jay.
For the record, Jay Sweet with Community Development. Alexis done a very good job, I think, explained the basics of this, and it has changed little since their initial proposal. The background is the same, it's just over a half-acre lot, it's a narrow lot. It did have a hotel on it of some sort previously. She's already gone through the future land use, which is commercial, the zoning is commercial, and of course, it is a vacant piece of property.
Jay, one quick question. Is this allowed under the current zoning?
As a CP, as a PD under the Benita Beach Road overlay.
All right, so can you explain that?
Sure. Sure. So what we have currently adjacent, there's a, to the west of CPD, that's where Momentum Brewery is, and some auto repair. To the south, we have the PD of Spanish Wells, which includes the condos. To the north, it's zone commercial, but we allow residential and commercial, and so you have the Citadel condominium to the north, and then, of course, you have the existing hotel immediately to the east. The original proposal was we zone the property to a planned development to allow for the hotel, that's allowed under the Benita Beach Road corridor uses. So they have to have this order to the hotel, so the CC zoning does not, but it is a allowed use within the corridor as a planned development. So they have come in for the planned development. Their original proposal was to build a 60-room hotel, not to exceed 55 feet in height, and then they did ask for the deviation of the buffer to the north side of the property. This site plan is, concept plan is the same as Alexis showed you for the hotel site. Note that to the west, what Momentum is, when that CPD came in, they had to provide access to the property. So there is an access there that is part of that original approval. There's not a recorded access with the Comfort Inn. They'll have to negotiate with Comfort Inn. Staff will help them negotiate with Comfort Inn to the best of our abilities. Obviously, it's for the best for the city to do that. The temporary parking lot that they had proposed originally, which they, this morning said they can do without, was that, simply put, a simple circulation that would allow access both from the hotel and from Momentum Brewery. And then we had some concepts, because they don't have their architecture yet, they wanted to give an idea of what a boutique would look like. This is sort of a sketch-up. Obviously, with letting it at three stories, it will not be that tall, but you can see that they're looking for some sort of, what I would say, something that's going to entice someone coming just by the architecture. Our recommendations for approval is very, very simple. We said the number of hotel rooms not to exceed 60, but the actual number would be determined when they come in. And the reason is, is that when you limit the height from five stories to three stories, what can you physically put on the property, physically provide the parking for? We didn't think 60 would be possible, but we're willing to give them the benefit of the doubt, they've now reduced it to 52. And staff would leave the same condition in there, show us that it actually, it actually can work and fit, and that's probably a more realistic number than the original 60. We recommended the architectural design come back to the zoning board for approval and that they limit the connections. We made a condition that if they build a temporary parking lot, that it had to be built to land development standards. We didn't want somebody coming and say, oh, we can build a shell rock or gravel, it needs to be a real parking lot, we're not going to let something that would detract from what we're trying to do with Benita Beach Road. Landscaping for the parcel, again, to be consistent with the visioning plan, so as that visioning plan develops, if we have a corridor that is oak or a corridor that is pine or a corridor that is palm, we want the landscaping to be consistent with that corridor area that, as the visioning plan develops. Applicant use their best efforts to obtain a cross-access easement, and now we'll get into the meaty one, if you will, which is, we know that we have problems along Benita Beach Road, we know that we have problems with amount of traffic during season, it's one of the reasons you want to eliminate the opportunities. State statute says we cannot turn down a project because of traffic, we're prohibited to do that. So what state statute offers is an opportunity to do a proportional fair share. And what we have put in here, as far as staff is concerned, that a new traffic impact statement will be done at time of their development order. That traffic impact statement takes and evaluates their impact on the road, and whatever their impact is above what the road capacity is, they would pay their proportional fair share to make those improvements. That would be a check that written to the city, the city has to put into a fund that would only be spent on Benita Beach Road. But that would be the way that, to do it according to state statute. And just to be very clear, I can get into the very technical aspect of it, but one of the things on proportional fair share and the condition that we have placed on this is that they don't, they don't look at just that little 100-foot section of road in front of their development. It is the impact that they have, and so they go out to the intersections on either side. If that impact exceeds a certain percentage, they have to go further. So, you know, this, in this instance, it's a small hotel, I wouldn't anticipate that it goes four or five intersections, but if it had been a manufacturing facility, I'm being a little ridiculous, with 100 employees, it could have an impact further down the road. We have developed standards that says you analyze your traffic, if you exceed a certain percentage, you go to the next intersection. On a small one, I don't anticipate that being an issue, but it is a condition that we are asking for in all developments to be consistent, and they have agreed, as you heard this morning, to that condition. Again, it's, there's a lot of details in that. One of the other things that we put in here is that currently, this is not city council's vision, and we understand it, but currently, there is a plan to widen Benita Beach Road. And I know that's not where we're headed, but we can actually quantify that using DOT figures if they come in and we need to establish a dollar amount that they should pay proportional fair share to. Again, that money goes into a fund, it can only be spent on improvements to Benita Beach Road. If the plan changes, then so be it, the plan would change, but at least we know where we're headed currently. The plan would change, but at least we know where we're headed currently, and so we can establish a dollar amount and meet the statutory requirements of proportional fair share. And we find it consistent with the comp plan. They must address the Benita Beach Road conditions, and the property was built on before, it's been bulldozed, there's nothing there of any environmental significance, and everything else. The other thing I will say is that we did send out 140-some notices to the residences as we would normally do. This was the first time that we put a option on the back, they could write down, and they could respond. I received 37 responses. Now, some of them owned more than one unit, and so that number may actually be represented a little bit higher. They were all against the project. Most of them either just said, I'm against it, but a lot of them were very concerned about the height originally, because their pool is immediately to the north, and they were concerned about the height and the shading of the pool in season, which I think is a legitimate concern. It's also one of the reasons staff had said, no, it needed to be reduced to three stories. We had come to that conclusion before the residents, but I, I think the residents were right in that assessment also. And I know you have several in here that'll, will want to talk, but any questions from council?
Great. Thank you, Jay. Council? Peter?
Uh, Jay, when are you going to give your report on the zoning board and what they found? Or were you intending to do that?
I can do that right now. The zoning board got very tied up and spent most of their discussion...
Start with what they decided.
They, they, they recommended denial.
Okay.
But let me, I, I think it is, it is worth it to explain the way the conversation went.
I'm sorry, before you, before you, I'm, I'm really interested in what they said.
Okay.
Not, not your interpretation.
Well...
In other words, not that you won't have the time to rebut, but...
Sure.
I'm really interested in what they said about various elements of this.
What?
Because, you know, we asked these people to do this.
Sure.
They spend hours doing it. I'd like to hear what they said.
The, the conversation, of what they said, dealt mostly with the parking lot. And they had a, an in-depth conversation about the parking lot, and they decided to have a vote first whether or not they should allow the parking lot. And there was a motion to allow it for a year, and then 18 months, and they had a huge discussion about that. Ultimately, they decided not to do the parking lot, and then they, without a lot of conversation or in-depth discussion, voted against the project after they decided not to allow the parking lot.
I thought they did allow the parking lot.
They, no, they, they, they voted not to allow the parking lot.
All right, let me, Audrey, is it, I assume it's appropriate for members of city council to watch the zoning board meetings?
Yes, it is. As well as, if you look in your packet, you'll see you have a copy of the minutes.
Okay, all right.
And I am looking at...
All right, no, sorry, thank you. All right, so with that, I'd like just to, excuse me, I, I just had a question, thank you, which was, we're allowed to watch it? If we're allowed to watch it, we can ask comments of staff based on what we saw?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you. So there was extensive discussion about the rear buffer. There was extensive discussion about the number of units here. There was extensive concern about the size and the number of these units. There was extensive discussion about this thing being piecemealed, in their view, all right? Which is, we're not seeing the whole presentation here, we're seeing part of it. How could you fit the parking under this, et cetera? So I'd like you to really...
Sure.
Give some expansive explanation to us about what this group said. I'm not saying we have to agree or disagree with it, but I, I honestly believe that for the sake of a proper procedure, we need to understand that, and if you're not prepared to do it, I'd say we adjourn and come back, and then when staff is prepared to present, we can hear it. Because a lot more happened than what you said.
Yeah, but we, if I may, we also all have the opportunity to watch the zoning. I, I did myself. I, I watched the entire thing, and also looking at the minutes, the parking lot did pass four to two.
Well, I, I watched it also, and here, and I'm just reading it, it says they, the staff, oh, the staff recommends approval, and did they not pass the hotel, but they, they approved the parking lot for 18 months, didn't they?
No, then they disapproved the whole thing.
Then they disapproved the whole thing.
Right.
If, if it went forward, the condition changed in the zoning. Instead of being five years, it changed to 18 months, and then after they made that change, they denied the whole thing without prejudice.
Oh, okay.
And Audrey, the concept of without prejudice was what?
Okay, so in our land development code, we have a provision with or without prejudice. If it's without prejudice, an applicant can turn in another application. If it is with prejudice, an applicant has to wait one year before they may even turn one in to go through the process again. Remember, the process takes about six to nine months.
So I took it that they had concerns about, among other things, the back buffer. And Mike may disagree from watching it, that they had concerns about, you're right? I just want Jay to...
Yes, I just want to show him something in the LDC.
Okay.
I apologize.
Oh, wait, it's all right.
And what I'm showing him is the underlying zoning of community commercial districts, and what it states in its language, why it's different than other commercial districts.
Okay. So Jay, what I recollect seeing was concerns about the back buffer, which I believe was talked about as normally being 15 feet, or in the, in the areas around it was 15 feet. At least that was the discussion.
Right.
Okay. And reducing this to a smaller amount with particular concern with respect to the neighbors behind it. I saw concerns about the number of units being 60, and I see Alexis has come back with a, a smaller amount. And there were other concerns as well, and what I heard them saying was that because of those concerns, and because of concerns about concentration, they, they were saying no, but not definitely no. They were saying no without prejudice, meaning that the applicant could come back with something to the zoning board, you know, and to us, to hear it again with respect to the possibility of approval or disapproval at that time. Is that a fair summary?
Uh, that certainly is one direction council can proceed with.
No, I'm, no, I'm saying with what the zoning, is that a fair summary of the zoning board?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Council, Mike, did you?
Um, so the revised number of 52, is that still a up to 52? I mean, we're not saying definitely 52. It's what you will show can fit there. And the, the other thing would be, is this reduced buffer in the back completely necessary? I mean, can we go with a, a slightly larger buffer, even up to the, the full 15?
The, we're requesting again to reduce the width of the buffer, and it is necessary to accommodate a large enough, wide enough drive aisle for fire access, because, due to the size of the site. What we're looking to do is put in more plants, because that can really provide more visual screening than, more width. We felt that the offset of more plants would actually do more for the neighbors, especially with more trees, because that will be visible above the fence line and be able to block the upper story, the second story of, of the building, whereas the 15 feet with, with the five trees per hundred linear feet wouldn't do much in terms of blocking view sheds of the building.
Yeah, obviously, with the, the 15 foot versus seven and a half foot, the whole idea is for the, the viewing angle to, whatever you put there to be able to block the three-story building. So if you do go with more taller things, that would block the three stories. What about the, the bushes? Could they be taller bushes in between the trees to help with that, too?
Due to the height of the, we would have to plant everything on our property, and the, that existing fence wall, I would say is at least six feet, so to get a hedge that's, I don't believe there's a hedge you can install that would go over the top of that fence line or wall line, and do anything that would be visible from the Citadel side of the wall. So really, the trees are the only thing that we can install that would be visible from their side to block views of the building.
To help with the buffering, would it be allowable if you got, if they agreed and you guys paid to have more buffering put on the other side of the, uh?
That is...
Well, I mean, obviously, they would have to agree, but...
We could look at that, yes.
Okay.
Okay. Counsel? No?
The buffering is on all sides. It's not just the backside is what you're talking about. You need the seven and a half feet on all sides, is that what you said?
Uh, no, ma'am, we, we're required to do five-foot Type A buffers on our east and west, which we can fully accommodate, and then we have the enhanced Benita Beach Road buffer along, along the roadway, which we are meeting the code in that case as well. So the only area of relief we're seeking from a buffer standpoint is that northern property line.
Of that part. Closest to the condos.
Correct.
Right.
Counsel, any further comments at this point? If not, okay. Audrey, can we allow some, the public at this point?
Absolutely.
Okay. Members of the public, if you'd like to make comments, please, please come on up.
And sir, you've been sworn in already.
Yes.
And just please state your name for the record, sir. Good morning, welcome.
Good morning, Your Honor. Salvatore Tambassio, a resident at the Citadel. And the modifications that, that, that Mr. Cyrus and his representative have presented this morning initially were, addressed a, a lot of our concerns, and, and I thought that was terrific that they were approaching it in that way to, you know, to bend over backwards to, to, to satisfy us. I, now, one issue that just seems to keep coming up is the parking lot. And I'm not a builder, but I don't know, Mr. Cyrus has, has offered to modify that, that request and not even do a parking lot. Why would you put a parking lot in, in a temporary, in the first place, you know, for a, for an undetermined amount of time, and then go through the expense of removing it to, to start your building? Just business sense to me, you know, with my experience in building. And I don't, and it, and it, I don't, I don't see why the board would even consider that, you know, having, it's up to the board, but I don't, I don't see the, the wisdom in, in considering, in still keeping the, the consideration of establishing a parking lot, especially considering that the builder has offered to take that off the table in his modifications. That's the only issue that I needed to address. Thank you.
Okay, great.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else from the public?
I would like to...
Yes, ma'am, come on up, please.
Oh, ma'am, have you been sworn in? Can I swear you? Please raise your hand. Do you swear, or firm testament, you provide today's truthful truth and nothing but deceit?
Yes, I do.
Thank you. Oh, okay. If you could fill out the paperwork or give it to the clerk, it's okay to, and stick your name to the clerk.
All right. My name is Joanne Krieske. I'm a, a resident of the Citadel. You're planning to approve something. I have a question. This, uh, commercial planned development, it's asking for accessory uses and other permitted uses, and I would like to know what that means. What is planning to go into this besides a hotel? What are these other uses that they're allowed to have? What, what does, what does commercial planned development include?
Alexis?
Sure. Thank you. For the record, Alexis Crespo. Accessory uses would be anything to support the hotel that would be really solely for the patrons of the hotel, such as an administrative office space inside where the accounting group would sit, maybe a small cafe in the lobby where you could get a coffee, things to that effect. With a larger hotel, that could include recreation, restaurant, things like that. Due to the size of this parcel, I would imagine the accessory uses will be very limited. If we did any outdoor consumption of alcohol, we would have to comply with your code, which I, I believe would preclude outdoor seating without further approval from...
Right.
...the board. We, we could not have any outdoor alcohol areas.
Would that ever be allowed? Would the board allow that, to have an outdoor bar?
Jay?
It would, it would be a special exception, so they would have to go through the process and go before the Planning Commission and City Council.
I would simply like to know if the board would actually approve something like that. We're a community right across the wall. We're a quiet community. We've been a quiet community all these years. We don't need a outside bar, outside restaurants. We have that momentum right next to us, and they get a lot of activity on weekends, especially during the season. Now, they don't go late. I think by 10 o'clock or so, they're done, and that's fine. But I don't think we need anything more than that. And I would hope that the chamber, that we're your constituents, we vote for you people. We would, you would have a little consideration for us. I mean, if it's going to be, why, why do they even want to build their dream on that little property? I have no idea. I mean, I would think you would find something bigger to, to, so you can build your dream the way you want it. But that is not the proper place for a big community like that. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, ma'am. Thank you very much. Anybody else from the public?
I'm going to give it back to you.
Seeing none? Okay. Audrey?
Uh, before council discusses, one of the things that Mr. Sweet and I were discussing was the underlying zoning is CC community commercial district. And that has a special, it's all commercial land development code conventional property has certain attributes to it. And Jay, would you like to elaborate on that in particular?
One, one of the things that, that the community commercial allows is big shopping centers and stuff. And, and really, I think what's happened over a period of time, parcels were sold off, developed, the Citadel's developed, the, what we call Momentum, which is originally an auto repair place, was developed, the hotels developed. It would have made sense for this property to be on CC when there was a large piece of property there. It really doesn't make any sense for it to be in that category now. Plus, when you add the additional restrictions of the Benita Beach Road corridor, anything that beca, that is, would be objectionable in any sense requires either a special exception or a planned development, depending on the size of the property. Since this property's less than one acre, anything that they would want to do, typically speaking, would, would be required to come in for this planned development designation, which is why they're here. The, the uses that are in the CC, the CC district that could go in there were pro, are probably more objectionable. On the other hand, I'm not sure they would ever go in there because the property's so small. So we've got a situation where the zoning really doesn't fit the property, therefore the applicant has come in to amend it, to comply with the Benita Beach Road conditions. As far as the accessory uses and, and as far as outdoor alcohol, outdoor alcohol requires a special exception by the city council, which means that the people get the same notices they got this time. They'd be notified, they'd have the opportunity to come in if he wanted to pursue that. Frankly, with this type of hotel setup, it would be unusual that you would see that come in. If you think about a boutique hotel, people go there for a variety of reasons. The more rooms, the more accessory uses you would have. You know, a hair salon, a masseuse, a pool, a sauna, those are all things that could be an accessory use. But typically, it has to be economically viable, and I don't see that being an issue here, because the sheer size of the property, which is going to limit the number of rooms. He will do good, I think, to get 54 rooms there and, and the store is a lot of 52. I, I suspect that it'll be something even less, because by the time you park it, provide for employees, and address all the needs, it's going to be an interesting project. And it's also one of the reasons that staff has suggested they come back with this architecture, because in order to meet the design and the vision of Benita Beach Road, we want good architecture, and we don't want to have somebody put together just a box to try to maximize it. We need to look and see what the architecture's like. He has, he has agreed to do that. We have had conversations with him. He's, he has stated to us that architecture's very important to him, that that's part of what he wants to do, so I'll leave it at that.
And then finally, I want to point out, I, we have a draft zoning ordinance in front of you. It was last revised August 3rd. That was the addition of the legal description and sketches. It was last revised August 3, that was the addition of the legal description and sketches. I have modified condition two, so that it shall not exceed 52 units, as well as in the front part approval request, change it to 52 from 60. I also, consistent with Councilmember Corumba's comments, as well as some of the discussion by the council, changed condition six. The first sentence reading the same, and then being added to it and reviewed by staff to ensure compatibility. The applicant will make a good faith effort to intensify the buffer to the north residential parcel by requesting the Citadel condominium that the hotel can install and maintain additional plans on their parcel to meet or exceed the required buffers. So I would still need to get a, if that is okay by the applicant as well, and I believe there was one more change.
And if, while she's looking, if I might interrupt for one quick second. I think it was staff's intent, if not clearly stated, that also when they come with the architectural, they come in with a cross-section of the buffer, the same as council has required on other projects, so that you can visually see how that buffer interacts with the building.
Do you want that to go to zoning board and then council, after we've been by architect? Okay, that'll be added in.
Okay, great, thanks, Jay. Counsel, anything at this time? Audrey? Jay?
The only other thing is if you are denying, I need to have findings of fact for the basis for decision.
I'd like to make a motion, and it's to deny but without prejudice. And the reason I'm suggesting this is not that I don't think this should eventually be approved. It sounds like the applicant has made some progress with respect to the neighbors, I think that's great. But my concern really relates to what I was saying before, which is, the zoning board below spent a lot of time on this, they ended up denying it. They had a whole host of concerns, which got subsumed in the fact that they denied it. So it wasn't presented in the denial, relating to things like the 15 foot, relating to things like density, et cetera. And they simply suggested that it come back to them with respect to those concerns. And it sounds like, for example, the 52 is, in a sense, intended to be responsive to their concerns. But they didn't mention 52, as you know. I mean, they just, they just said something like, you know, putting 60 in this is, what's the old expression? It's just, it's just too crowded there, okay, is what they were saying. So it's a long way of explaining my motion, which is that I would like for this to simply go back to the zoning board for consideration as revised. This is not what was put before the zoning board.
Want it to be a remand, or do you want?
Well, you'll have to, John, you want to help me with this?
That's a big difference.
I don't want to prejudice the applicant, that's for sure.
It sounds to me that the direction you're going is not that you want this project to go away.
Right.
You're wanting this project to amend itself, and maybe provide additional details that address some of the zoning board's comments, is that correct?
And have the zoning board, who spent all the time with those comments, be the people who review the changes, out of respect for the work they're doing.
Yes, sir, and to address that, I would then recommend, as Audrey recommended, to remand this back to the zoning board. A denial, it carries a little more weight, and I think doesn't really get you where you want to go.
That's not, thank you.
Yeah.
Appreciate it, John. So what John said.
Got it, and I'll write a remand order for.
Well, that's my motion, I don't have a, I mean, that's my motion.
And it's a lot easier one to write, so I appreciate that.
Okay, there's been a motion, and Councilmember O'Flynn, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, there's been a motion and a second, further discussion?
Yeah, well, I mean, from what I understand, that this is basically just a conditional approval, because it costs a lot of money to do all the architectural drawings. And that's basically kind of what the zoning board was asking for, was they wanted to see more of the details, but it's expensive to do the details if we're going to say no hotel. So this is basically just saying, yes, we're open to the idea of a hotel, and you can build it as long as you get all the pieces to fit. So, I mean, that's how I see it.
That's right.
And then, you know, the parking structure, you know, is a temporary bonus, you know, to help out the neighbors. I know they've been having a little issue with the medical building, you know, people trying to park for Momentum, go into the medical building, and they're not liking that. So, you know, it is kind of a good neighbor thing, you know, obviously Momentum's doing very well. They are most likely outgrowing that, and this would give them a little temporary time to look for something bigger that would suit their needs. So, I mean, I just think it's a win-win, plus you get the extra buffering now along the road, which would make it a lot, look a lot better along there. So that's my feeling.
I would not, I would not like to direct that the parking be included there. I think that zoning should look at that again. I'm not in favor of the parking for a variety of reasons, particularly if it's a temporary thing. I mean, what's the point of doing that for 18 months, which was their original suggestion? I appreciate the need for more parking in there because of the surrounding neighborhoods, but I don't want to look at a parking lot full of cars along Beneath Beach Road. So I think we should not require that they include that parking aspect to it, because that's the one area that I was not totally in favor of. But I am in favor of having the zoning look at it again and continuing their work with more specificity coming from the applicant.
Okay. Greg, did you have something?
Yeah, I guess my thought is, is that, kind of like Councilman Gibson said, they're going to get a second bite of the apple. All we're wanting to do is, all the applicant wants to do is say, hey, we're interested in it. Because otherwise, if, in my opinion, if we turn them away, what's going to go in there? Either A, a vacant lot for the rest of our eternity, or something else that may be less desirable than a boutique hotel. And as far as the parking lot goes.
They can work that out.
They can work that out, I don't see a problem with a parking lot being there, it's a good neighbor. I mean, there's going to be a lot of traffic coming through in and out of their entrances when this boutique opens up, if it does get approved, so. And again, if it's up to either Momentum or even an overflow lot for Comfort Inn, if those two entities want to pay for it, all they're asking the owner is, hey, can we borrow your land for, till you build on it? And if the zoning or this council wants to put a stipulation on it, to me, a parking lot is showing the business that it's, that it's working. If there's no parking, the business is going to dry up and go away. And I don't want to see any business in Beneath Springs go away because of lack of parking, especially when we have the ability to give them temporary parking, because let's play it out. If this gets approved, and he puts a parking lot there with his hotel, they're going to park there anyway. It's just going to be a hotel, they're just going to be sharing it with a hotel staff and patrons rather than nothing right now.
Is a parking lot a permitted primary use on Beneath Beach Road?
I'd look.
Give me a second. I knew it was in that, I shouldn't have done. It's not a coordinator.
John, do you want to come up? You may not want to, but would you? Thanks, Sean.
And John, have you been sworn in? Okay, and who's sworn in?
Swear him in.
In terms of the parking lot, I think that everybody that has looked at this application shares the concerns that not only the zoning board had, but also carried over by this council. But to put this in perspective, I don't think the applicant was looking to install a parking lot. That was not really the goal. So if we're looking along these lines of this discussion, I would kind of frame this in the manner of, this is going to be a temporary type use. The only reason we would even entertain the thought would be because, as a result, the landscape buffer would be installed, so you wouldn't be looking directly at the cars. And if this council were to go along with this use, I would highly recommend that it be time-limited. I think that the applicant had said about two years before he breaks ground. You know, whether it's 18 months, two years, that's a detail I think this council can discuss, but I would not look at this as an unlimited type use. I don't think this applicant is looking to keep this as a parking lot forever, because it doesn't really generate revenue for him. However, because you have placed your highest priority on Beneath Beach Road, you want that landscape buffer to be installed, and you want it to be attractive, and you want the properties to be developed as you have approved them. And so that would include, in this particular case, should the council decide, a hotel, not a parking lot. So that's just some, how I would look at it. In terms of whether a parking lot is permitted or not, I'll let Jay provide the specifics, but I don't believe a commercial parking lot is permitted along Beach Road.
Great. Thank you, John. Jay?
She's looking up one note right now, but it appears, now, number one, it would be allowed as CPD.
It's not allowed US 41.
And it is allowed under the existing zoning as a use by right.
Okay.
So technically, they could come in and build a commercial parking lot.
There's two different types of, or there's multiple types of parking lots. So the one that it's permitted, it's certainly, I know temporary is permitted, let me just.
He's double checking, but the temporary is permitted.
Why don't we just hold off, it's maybe too much to ask, just, you know, there's a lot in there.
Okay.
Why don't we just let it go?
Counsel?
Well, it sounds like temporary is permitted.
Well, I think that should be clarified for the zoning board, because there's a big difference between a use by right and then asking for.
Okay, it's accessory use, it's permitted for a commercial use, it's a special exception required. Likewise, if they wanted to put a public parking garage, was spelled wrong, special exception, temporary is permitted by right.
Temporary by right?
Temporary by right.
Okay, so we don't have to vote on that anyway?
Right.
Right, good point, good point. Counsel, further discussion? There's been a motion and a second, further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Slackta?
No.
Councilwoman Dewitt?
No.
Councilwoman Corumba?
Aye.
Mayor Simmons?
No.
Councilman Gibson?
No.
Councilman O'Flynn?
Aye.
I like the sporadic order, by the way, too. That keeps everybody wondering, that's good.
Somebody juggling these up like a Lotto?
So we voted not to send it back to zoning, is that what we voted on?
That's correct.
Okay.
So that has been denied? Is there a motion to approve?
I'll make the motion to approve, and do we need to approve the parking lot since it is a?
Right now, it's 18 months according to the recommendation by the zoning board.
No, but I mean, you said it's a right.
Right.
You would only need it if you wanted to limit the time. That would be the only reason you needed to address it.
And I would limit it to two to three years, if they think they're going to get it off the ground in two to three years. And make the motion to approve with the corrections earlier, and up to three years on the parking lot.
Okay, there's been a motion and a second, further discussion on that? Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilwoman O'Flynn?
Uh, no.
Councilwoman Slackta?
Aye.
Councilwoman Dewitt?
Aye.
Councilwoman Corumba?
No.
And Mayor Simmons?
Aye. Thanks again for the order, I like that, that's good. I'd like to hear her logic on that, but that's a different discussion. Okay, thank you very much. Audrey?
Yeah, that's it, this concludes the hearings today.
Okay.
I would just like to say thank you, and we will be back with the specifics that the zoning board wants to see, and we'll bring that to them, and you, thank you.
Great, and do we want to allow for any further public comment?
You closed it when you started discussion.
Yeah, okay, wonderful, okay, we're adjourned, thank you, folks.
Nice job.
Thank you.